We can review, review it.
Oh boy.
Oh boy.
It must have been a quick trip because I'm seeing you today. Okay. Where'd you go? Nice. Stop. Did you really? This is really crazy. It's amazing.
That, yeah. That's cool.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to North Flat City Council here on Tuesday, July 15th, 2025 at 5:30 PM. We're of course here in the City Council chambers, calling the meeting to order. I would just ask the council, I had a couple of reports of microphones not working real well at our last meeting. So as you do a roll call, would you make sure you speak into your microphone? And then the, the IT people and Alexa will tell us if somebody can't be heard correctly or something like that. So. Okay, first we have calling the meeting officially to order. We have an invocation by Reverend Jonathan Sorensen, St. Patrick Catholic Church.
Please. Heavenly Father, we give thanks for your mighty power, which is revealed through your mercy and shared with your beloved children. Heavenly Father, we give thanks for your mighty power, which is revealed through your mercy and shared with your beloved children. May the authority entrusted to us in govern and government be exercised with compassion and love for all who live in this city and nation. Let your divine wisdom guide the decisions of the North Platte City Council, and may it shine through all their actions. We entrust all people to your boundless mercy, that through self-governance, they may also share in your power and lead their lives and families in accordance with your holy will. Grant us unity and peace that only you can give. And after the blessings of this life, welcome us into the joy of eternal life. We pray to you, our Lord and God, now and forever. Amen.
By the good and evil side of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the infinite justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Angie, the roll call, please.
Here, 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 here.
We got a passing grade from the I T people, so we'll continue. Open Meetings Act, a current copy of the Open Meetings Act of the state of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. Meeting procedure, the public may address specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please identify yourself by stating your name and address. Please address the council through the mayor in limited remarks. We respect our city employees and request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or the mayor. Individuals in violation will be declared out of order. Do not have any accolades or presentations at the front tonight, so we'll continue with the consent agenda. All matters under consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item from consent by request. One A, approve the minutes of July one, twenty twenty-five. B, place on file the treasurer's report for May twenty twenty-five. C, authorize the mayor to execute a high-intensity drug trafficking area, or H I D T A initiative, cooperative operation for drug enforcement, C O D E, grant required certified assurances and other application documents. D, approve the mayor's reappointments of Lee Davies, Kathleen Matthews, and Emily World to the City of North Platte Planning Commission. E, approve the mayor's appointment of Kevin Mees as Director of Information Systems. F, approve the application by Knights of Columbus, twelve eleven, St. Patrick Council for, yeah, for the, uh, for a special designated license on September thirteen, twenty twenty-five, from five P. M. to eleven P. M. at St. Patrick's Church, parking lot at four twenty-one East Fifth Street, with an alternate location of the St. Patrick Catholic Church Parish Hall at four fifteen North Chestnut Street for a block party. G, adopt the resolution consenting to the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor on East Fifth Street and North Dewey Street during the Music on the Bricks on August eighth and nine, twenty twenty-five. H, approve the application by McCabe's L L C for special designated licenses on August eighth and ninth, twenty twenty-five, from twelve P. M. to one A. M. at East Fifth Street and North Dewey Street during Music on the Bricks.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Rieker, second by Nisley. Calling the question on the consent agenda, please. Uh-oh, Ed's clicker is broken.
Got it right side up now.
Thanks, Ed. Okay, consent agenda is passed. Regular agenda. Hold on, folks, this is gonna get interesting. Number two, first reading in action on ordinance number four-two-one-four to provide a procedure for determining equitable service charges to be levied on all users which discharge wastewater to the wastewater system operated by the city of North Platte. Lane, the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number forty-two fourteen. An ordinance to provide a procedure for determining equitable service charges to be levied on all users which discharge wastewater to the industrial wastewater system operated by the city of North Platte and providing certain prohibitions.
You moved to adopt.
Ordinance number forty-two fourteen relating to the wastewater system operated by the city of North Platte.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Rieker. Discussion, where did Brent go? There he is. Okay, he's hiding in the back. Brent, you wanna give us a, a quick version of what this ordinance does? Please.
Good evening, Mayor Council. What this is set up is to create a, uh, method for any user that connects to the wastewater system. And this is specifically dealing with the industrial system for a way of calculating fees and also the maintenance operating costs. So this is just setting up a generic blueprint for how the system would be utilized. Right now, what we're looking at is there'll be one user on it, so it's be pretty simple math. But it's set up bigger picture globally so that it could be utilized if there's other users that hook on it. There's a method formula for calculating who pays for what. It also delineates the capacity of the plant, so that's set up and monumented, I guess, in that respect.
Thank you.
Bill, did you have anything to add?
Bill, do you have anything to add?
No, just that we, we spent a lot of time on this and we're, um, ran it past a lot of folks. And so, uh, we included everything we could think of. There's specific provisions regarding financial security that we spent a lot of time on. And so, um, I commend Brent and everybody else that worked on this because they put a lot of work into it.
Okay, council, questions? Ty, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor. Maybe just a question, thinking through the timeline on this, I know we've got bond ordinances and other things to talk about. Is, would it be convenient for the council to consider a waiver of the three readings on this based off where we're at in this whole picture of this item?
I think it would be helpful, yes.
I'll go ahead and make that motion so we can go to that item. I'd like to make a motion to waive the three required readings on this.
Second.
Motion by Lucas, second by Volz to waive the three readings. Any discussion on waiving the three readings? Seeing none, calling the question on waiving the three readings, please. Three readings are waived on this item. Back to the original question. Any discussion? Ed?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So this will only apply to the one, uh, industrial facility. Won't apply to any other existing industry in town?
That's correct, to the industrial facility. Other questions?
Well, I guess I'm, sorry. How does, how do we measure the, the Union Pacific's inflow into our system and how do they get billed?
So that is covered by our, um, other ordinances that we pass each time we have a rate increase. And we have the different classes and how they're billed and how they're, um, measured, I guess, if you would. And so it's, it's per class. And I'd have to pull the ordinance to say, answer those questions specifically, but that's been addressed, um, quite a long time ago and how those were developed.
So they won't be rolled into the same.
This is. Don't.
It might be relevant to mention that the, the actual piping would make it impossible right now. I mean, it's a whole separate delivery system to the industrial plant, so. No, it could be changed in the future if it needed to be, but at this point.
All right, thank you.
Just on Brett?
Yep. Uh, Bill, you mentioned financial securities that are built into this. Can you kind of cover that a little bit?
Yeah, so section ten of the proposed ordinance lays out the different options that are available. And we did incorporate some comments from Congressman Lucas, uh, from, uh, some of the information he had provided me from the last meeting. But it, it gives any major contributing industry a couple of different options so far as, uh, being able to, um, post this financial security so that, um, it gives the city the comfort in knowing that the costs are going to be covered. Uh, because with the industrial wastewater plant like this, there are obviously pretty substantial costs. And so the city is covered, uh, so far as, uh, making sure that the payments are made. And any major contributing industry also has some flexibility in choosing an option that works best for them for posting that financial security.
So essentially, this is a, a insurance policy for, once we get to agenda item for that contract piece of it. Okay, perfect. Uh, that makes me feel a lot better because that's some of my questions for that.
In the other thing, so. The other thing I can note for everyone, too, is that, um, under that section ten, uh, the city's requiring any of the major contributing industries to post that financial security through their tenth year of commercial operation, so.
That makes me feel a lot better about that. Um, I do have a question for Brent. On page thirty-two, there's a paragraph that's not filled in. I'm assuming agenda item three, that chart, it fills those, those questions in, the specifics.
What? I can help with that, too. Since this is kind of a generic ordinance covering anybody that would hook onto the industrial wastewater, they would be in that separate agreement as far as what their actual B O Ds and, um, usage is, so.
The last page? That is meant to be kind of as a template or a guide for future ones. And then you'll fill in the blanks based on whatever that industry is.
Agenda item three, there's some, there's some charts with specifics filled out. Is that meant to tie it back to that paragraph?
Correct, and that would be specific for, um, sustainable.
Gotcha.
We have the parameters for them and their wastewater. This is just a blank template. If we have X Y Z company show up, that they would use that template to fill in their numbers, um, specific to their industry and their generation.
The acronyms didn't line up exactly, so I, but I, I, this is not my world, so the acronyms, I, I don't have a, a frame of reference for, so thank you for that.
Yeah, they were a little bit different. We had a few different ones on the generic one versus what we're looking at was sustainable, based on the components of their wastewater that we're looking at, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Ed?
So these escrow funds, um, that, that's to ensure that the city gets paid as, as more industry signs into this, how will those? Presume that the initial fees are to secure, that he's gonna get paid for, for the facilities to build. But future businesses that sign on to this, the bill, the, the facilities are already built. We have somebody that's guaranteeing that they're gonna pay for them. Will those guaranteed fees be altered because of more people using the system? Or will they all remain the same?
It somewhat depends on what point another user would join the process. So the, the bonds for this as proposed in future agenda items here tonight are, are looking at a twenty-year bond. And so if somebody joins at year twenty-one, the cost would be much different because the plant's paid for it. If somebody joins at year fifteen, their percentage of use would dictate their percentage of costs.
So it'll be pro rate?
Yep.
And I, I think the other thing, and, and maybe Brett can speak more to it than I can because it's maybe a little bit more beyond my technical capabilities. But the industrial wastewater plant has certain, um, capabilities right now, and I think it can be added on to, to produce more capabilities depending on a user's needs. And so that could result in building out something more than what's there. So this ordinance would incorporate some of those additional charges, too, to be able to be passed along to the end user.
Yeah, I hadn't thought of, from that perspective, I was thinking smaller entities that weren't going to use up the full capacity of the system, so.
Well, and if a, a future customer of the industrial waste water plant has a substantially different process that requires different chemicals or different holding tanks, or you know, there had, may have to be a mechanism to resolve that. And so then that, the additional cost could come into play at that point. We don't have anything in line that we're aware of that would do that, but it could happen in the future.
Hey, thanks so much for that clarification.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, calling the question on item number two as amended. Item number two is passed. Item number three. Approve the agreement for allocation of wastewater plant capacity with Sustainable Beef L L C and authorize the mayor to sign necessary documents.
I move to approve the agreement for allocation of wastewater plant capacity with Sustainable Beef L L C and authorize the mayor to sign necessary documents.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Rieker. Okay. In short, this is the agreement with Sustainable Beef, um, that follows the ordinance that was just passed by the council. Lane, you wanna talk through it? Excuse me. Talk through it a little bit.
So looking at what their full capacity would be, how many head a day, et cetera, their gallons of water, and then what we, um, going off of our conversations where we think, uh, will be in the water, so to speak. That's what your B O D table and your different things are. That's where this agreement comes from. And the way the agreement is, um, we will sit down with the industry each year and look at actual costs of running the plant, the maintenance, operation and maintenance. And that will then project or, um, determine what their yearly cost will be and their monthly breakdown will be. And so that's what this agreement is for.
And Bill, would you talk through both the, the debt side and the operational side of the agreement real quick, too? Just double checking something.
So I, I guess one point of order here, I think, um, what we have in the agenda, I just caught it. What we have in the agenda right now is what was in front of the council at the last meeting. But we did update some of the figures, um, to be able to reflect different capacities. So I think what we're, what we're asking the council to consider is instead of the, um, I think it's in the agreement in your council packet tonight. It, the sustainable beef flow shows as one point five M D Gs a day. I think we're gonna ask the council to consider one point eight seven five M D Gs per day. So, um, what we might wanna do is consider just, um, having the council approve the updated sustainable beef agreement. And so as far as capacities go, what we're doing there, um, I think that was your question, Mayor. What we're doing with these updated capacities is we're allowing sustainable beef, basically the full capacity of the industrial wastewater plant based on this agreement with them. Uh, because as the mayor had just talked about, we don't have any other end user at this time. And so they, they should be able to use all of the capacity that's there. And so that's what we've updated between the last meeting and tonight is that we've added in some updated figures to show that if they would need it, they can have the full plant capacity.
And I guess once they're in full operation, we'll know what their actual capacity or what their actual needs are. But until that time, we're giving them full capacity, then we can adjust this and at that time.
Go ahead, Ed.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if we get into a situation where sustainable beef is only using three quarters the capacity, and they know that's all they're ever gonna use, can, can the city then, uh, allow somebody else to slide in and use the other twenty-five percent?
Yes. And it, and it would be to sustainable beef's cost advantage to do so. So I would think they would, if that's the case, they would be motivated to do that.
So we're not limiting ourselves here.
Ty?
Mr. Mayor. Could I just move that from the present materials that we alter the one point five zero zero M G D per day to one point eight eight seven five M G D per day, just to ensure clarification on the item?
I'll second.
Okay. You want me to read through those?
And, and if you could add to that, and it would also include the updated sustainable beef loadings for the, um, materials presented from our city attorney?
Okay, update loading. Are you still okay with your second, Ed? Okay. Motion by Lucas. Second by Rieker. To update the number to the one point eight seven five M G D per day and the other associated loadings as provided by the city attorney. We need to, go ahead, Ed.
I'd just like to say it's exciting to be a part of this. This is really exciting and, and it's good to know that, uh, there's some meat that's gonna be coming onto the shelves at the store here before too long. Or maybe already is, I don't know. This is a huge change that's happening in our community. And, uh, I wanna thank David and his crew for all they've done for our town. And and what I suspect you're going to be doing, and um thank all you guys for the cooperation, helping us get this done. And 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 not just the, not just us here, but the whole, the whole city entourage that worked on this thing.
Quite a change in our town over time.
Quite a change. It it just changed the whole attitude of our town. Wonderful.
Okay, other comments or questions? Thanks, Ed. Okay, so we're considering a motion to adjust the numbers as we have stated, primarily the one point eight seven five M G D per day increase. Any other questions or comments? Calling a question on that change. That change is passed. Back to the original contract as amended. Any further comments or questions? Seeing done, calling the question on item number three as amended, please. Item number three is passed as amended. Item number four. First reading in action to adopt ordinance number four two one three authorizing the issuance by the City of North Platte, Nebraska of its combined utilities revenue bonds and the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed fifty-eight million in one or more series for the purpose of construction and acquiring additions and improvements to an equipment for the combined utilities of the city.
Mr. Mayor, I move to waive the three required readings on ordinance number forty-two thirteen. To adopt.
Go ahead, Ed.
Move to adopt number forty-two thirteen authorizing the issuance by the City of North Platte, Nebraska of its combined utilities revenue bonds in one or more series as presented on first reading.
Second.
Is that you, Rod?
Yeah.
Okay, motion by Rieker, second by Rod. Die. Lane, would you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number forty-two thirteen, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of combined utilities revenue bonds to be issued in one or more series of the City of North Platte, Nebraska, in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed fifty-eight million dollars for the purpose of paying the cost of certain improvements to the combined utilities of the city. Directing the application of the proceeds of said bonds, prescribing the form, terms and details of said bonds, pledging and hypothesizing the revenue and earning to the combined water system, electric system, industrial wastewater system, and sewer system of said city for the payment of said bonds and the interest thereon, providing for the collection, segregation, and application of the revenues of said systems, providing for the sale of the bonds, appointing a paying agent, providing for the sale of the bonds, and authorizing officers of the city to finalize terms of the bonds, authorizing the the delivery of the bonds to the purchaser and ordering the ordinance published in pamphlet form.
Thank you. Okay, to start the discussion on this item number four, we have uh Austin Partridge here, who's here from Northland, and he has some information that he's gonna pass around, and we'll be displaying the same information on the screen. Angie, would you change the screen to the computer, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Austin Partridge with Northland. We serve as the city's municipal advisor. Uh thanks for having me. We have the bond ordinance on the agenda for tonight, um which will authorize the city to issue revenue bonds, provide the funding, the remaining funding for the construction of the industrial wastewater facility plant as well as improvements to the city's existing municipal wastewater plant. And we just thought it would be helpful to take a moment and walk you through a few slides that will provide you with a high-level overview of that ordinance. In addition to sharing out an update with you on the financing plan that we've been putting together over the last several months, um working with uh many parties involved, spending quite a bit of time on on putting that together, so thought it would be helpful to share an update with you all and just be available to answer any questions that you may have.
I have the clicker, Austin, so tell me when you want to go for it.
Sure, and I, do I have the keyboard as well? I'll do that. So first to start, this is just a brief recap of the industrial project, and then wanted to speak briefly about the improvements to the city's system as well. Many of you have seen this slide already. This is uh the information that we had discussed at the bond workshop. Uh but wanted to provide a quick recap. So the city had been awarded a twenty million dollar grant from the state that really provided the initial construction funding for that industrial wastewater plant. So alongside that project, the city is also planning to issue approximately five million dollars for improvements uh to the existing municipal wastewater plant, and our plan is to issue those bonds alongside the industrial bonds uh for a variety of reasons. One, you get the benefit of having a a bond rating on that smaller portion of debt. Uh and two, we're able to take advantage of this, the larger size of the industrial wastewater bonds, which generally helps attract additional investors, a wider group of investors to the city's bond offering. So there's some benefits to uh to doing that. Uh going back to the industrial plant, uh the difference between what was received in the state grant um and the total cost of that facility will be a a bond that is issued by the city and repaid from the service agreement and turned into uh from industrial users. As as you've been having that discussion, the current industrial user is Sustainable Beef. And and that, those bonds will be repaid entirely by um industrial users. Your current industrial user is Sustainable Beef. So just thought it would be helpful to provide a a quick recap of the projects. This next slide just go, gives an overview of our funding strategy. Um so the ordinance tonight, just like the ordinances that that you have um approved in the past, is a parameters ordinance. So all we're doing tonight is setting the parameters, setting the constraints of the financing. And one of those constraints is a not to exceed bond amount, which is currently set in the ordinance at fifty-eight million. And I wanted to note, too, that that is not the entire amount of funds that the city would have available for construction of the project. I think that's important to note here. Um included within that figure is a fully funded debt service reserve fund, uh which is ten percent of the par amount of bonds issued, or another way to think of it as is one full principal and interest payment on your bonds. That number also includes the cost of issuance on your bonds, in addition to any structuring that may be needed to sell those bonds in the future. Um so that figure takes into account all of those items. It's not necessarily the the entire portion of the city would have available for the industrial plant or for the city's uh municipal plant. The ordinance, sure.
Just saw him following your numbers. Estimated cost sixty-five billion, got five million of additional updates, so we're at seventy million. We have twenty million in ARPA fund, there's fifty million. The fifty-eight million, that eight million difference is what you just described?
Correct, yeah, that that is the majority of it, the reserve fund, cost of issuance, and then also give ourselves a slight cushion for different bond structures that may be needed in the future as well, so, yeah. So similar to uh our strategy with the recreation center bonds, the ordinance will also allow the city to issue these bonds in one or more series over time. There are several benefits to that process, one being we're able to to have some flexibility to adapt to the bond market um as rates change over the next couple of years um and and hedge really against change in interest rates. But also, as we get towards the end of constructing the facility, it allows us to resize that that bond issue based on exactly what you need for construction. So the ordinance doesn't obligate the city to issue that entire fifty-eight million. We'll resize the bond based on exactly what you need for construction, and issuing the bonds over time allows us to do that um pretty seamlessly. So these, these bonds, the one difference between these bonds for the industrial facility and the revenue bonds that you've issued for utility projects in the past is that the bonds for the industrial plant will need to be taxable. And anytime there's a private use scenario, which just means there's a private user, and there's a private user that's expected to repay the debt service on the bonds, those bonds are required then to be taxable, which just means they're gonna carry a slightly higher interest rate than, for example, the tax-exempt bonds that we're able to carve out and issue for the city's municipal projects. Uh you'll also notice these bonds are titled combined utility revenue bonds. The ordinance tonight will allow the city to pledge the revenues from your entire combined utility system towards the repayment of the bonds, uh and that's a fairly common strategy that other cities will utilize. One, as a credit enhancement to interact with the bond market, put ourselves in the best position to get the best rates and terms that we can get um in the market, and then also just leverage the strength of your entire combined utility system as a whole. So this slide shows our expected plan of issuance over the next two years. Um the the issuance for twenty twenty-five, we're anticipating we'll issue approximately twenty million dollars to deposit to to the city uh for the industrial plant, and then we will issue two and a half million in tax-exempt bonds to deposit and make available for the general municipal improvements. Next year, uh we would plan on issuing approximately seventeen and a half million for the industrial plant. Again, coming back and and filling out the remaining two and a half million for the city's portion, and then in twenty twenty-seven, we would look at issuing the remainder of the debt. Again, all of that is subject to change based on what the market does over these next two years, but sure.
So those numbers equate up to fifty million, which is the the actual money we need. The eight million difference, we wouldn't execute that unless we had to, or how does that work?
So, great question. So these numbers uh on this slide are the deposit that the city would receive from the bond proceeds. The, so you're you're right, yeah, so the the numbers on this slide are the the deposit to construction fund the city would have available to construct the projects. The not to exceed bond amount, that is the total par amount of the bond, so yes, it takes into account that reserve fund, the cost of issuance, uh those types of things, so yeah.
But when would that, when would the eight million for those other funds, when would that be executed in twenty, in twenty-five?
Uh this is what, this, we're we're anticipating that we would only issue uh which would be forty-five million for the industrial plant, and then five million for the the city's portion of the project, and that's, that's the amount that the city would receive in terms of dollars available for the project. The, the fifty-eight million is the total, total bond amount that includes all of those items that we had talked about, the the reserve fund, so not anticipating that we'll need that additional amount. But it's, it's, it's there to allow us to build in that reserve fund um to to build in the cost of issuance, those things.
So those aren't executed unless we need it.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
On slide four, this shows the preliminary debt service that is anticipated once all of the bonds are issued for the project. Probably hard to read on the screen, um hopefully it's more visible in in your, in your handout. I'll just provide a summary, so all the way over to the right-hand side shows the total debt service for the city's portion of the debt, which we would anticipate, once your existing sewer revenue bonds are paid off in twenty twenty-eight. The total debt service on the city's portion is approximately four hundred and ten thousand dollars per year. Next to that shows the debt service on the industrial plant in total, once all of the debt is issued, which we anticipate would be approximately four million, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year. Um again, this is preliminary, this assumes no change in interest rates over the next two years. Uh but that's what we're, we're anticipating for planning purposes right now. So this slide, uh these next two slides just, just provide a a more detailed look at this bond transaction that we're putting together for this year in twenty twenty-five. This first slide shows the taxable bonds for the industrial plant. Um we're looking at twenty million, um issued over twenty years. Interest rates in the taxable market right now are approximately five point seven seven percent. Those interest rates will move around up until we hold the bond sale, the underwriter holds the bond sale and issues the bonds in the market. Um that's when that rate is locked in over the next twenty years, unless you were to refinance and lower that at some point in the future. So that amount of debt issued over twenty years at that interest rate for this first series of bonds, that payment will be approximately one million nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars per year. And again, repaid through the service agreement with with industrial users currently sustainable. This next slide shows the tax-exempt portion of the debt, um anticipating approximately two and a half million that will be available. Um again, issued over twenty years, interest rates in the tax-exempt market are a little bit lower. Um four point six one percent is what we would be anticipating, and that would put your annual payment at just over two hundred thousand dollars a year for that first half of the of the city's portion for the financing, and this portion will be repaid from existing sewer revenues from the city. So one consideration uh that we have been spending time evaluating has been just the city's overall bonding capacity within your utility fund. Uh so that's one thing, as your municipal advisor, we can work with you on to plan for the future. And we want to ensure that the city would have adequate capacity for, to issue bonds for future projects as they come up in the future. And so just to, just to walk you through this, there's a lot of numbers on these next two slides to give you a a summary of what this is looking at is looking at, what is the maximum debt service that you could pay in your debt, in your utility funds, and still maintain the minimum debt service coverage covenant uh requirement that you are required to have for your revenue bonds. And that covenant that you have is one point two five times debt service coverage, which just means that for every dollar twenty-five of net revenue you produce and have available in your utility fund, you could support approximately one dollar of debt service in in that fund, and so that's, that's the concept of what we're looking at on these next two slides. Those green boxes uh on the left-hand side, that shows if the city were to issue separate revenue bonds, so electric revenue bonds, water and sewer revenue bonds, independent of each other, what is the total capacity that you could issue? So that max capacity within your electric fund of approximately fifty-nine million, and then within your water and sewer fund, just to look at them, condense it down a bit, approximately sixty million. Those two combined would be approximately a hundred and nineteen million that you could produce within your total combined utility fund. And that's the orange box that just looks at it on a combined basis, so you can see that those two scenarios are the same. You could, you could, no matter what strategy you you utilize to issue your bonds, you'd have generally that, that same capacity within those funds.
And and just so no one misunderstands, Austin, we are not issuing all those bonds, right?
You are not, we are not planning on issuing.
There are always questions about, yeah, about what is our capacity in the eventuality of some sort of emergency or something like that, and so that's the purpose of having this portion of the discussion.
Correct, that's good clarification. We're not planning on that amount of debt being issued, uh just looking at capacity for um for future and planning purposes. So this second, the second slide, oh sure.
Uh so I presume then, and and presuming again that uh the community's gonna grow, and we're gonna get more people and hopefully have more revenue coming in, that would impact the amount of money then that we would have available, or we could borrow again, so to speak.
Correct.
For future projects.
Yes, as as more revenue comes in, as you have more users, more revenue available for debt service in your utility fund, the more debt service that you could support in your utility fund. I think it's, it's also important to point out, these numbers don't take into account any revenue from industrial users or Sustainable Beef. So once those funds start coming into your industrial wastewater fund, um that will impact your, your future ability to issue debt as well in a positive way. So this, this last slide here just shows you um the capacity looking at this debt that we are looking to issue for the industrial and for the city's municipal plant. And you'll see that um we're we're anticipating issuing approximately fifty-five million um for the industrial plant and the city's portion of the project. You'd still have the capacity within your electric fund, really as long as you don't overborrow in any one fund more than what that fund could individually support, capacity within your funds is not impacted. And so just wanted to share that with the council tonight, that's, that's. And so just wanted to share that with council tonight. That's, that's one item that we are spending quite a bit of time working together and planning for, for the future.
I'd like to note that we do not have any debt in our electric fund or our water funds at this time. And we have that small amount still in our sewer fund that's paid off in the next two years outside of what we're talking about here. So the city's been very prudent with their funds and not having that debt. So just to point that out to council.
It's fair.
Yeah, I'd just like to add on that, that in the working group, as we were working on some of this, the question very directly to Austin was, okay, if we are using our bond capacity in this public-private partnership to help sustainable beef meet their wastewater needs. If we have a major weather event and we have all these aerial power lines and it tears the city up, well, how much of that capacity do we really just use to help, you know, this expansion of our local economy? And the, the bottom line is, is that, you know, without any growth of revenue or any inclusion or revenue of the new project, they're estimating that there's about $119 million worth of, of debt capacity. So in my mind, that should be the worst case scenario going forward. And so I had comfort with the answer to that question because as in real simple napkin math, okay, we're gonna use, you know, oh, maybe a third to less than half of our overall capacity, which in my mind still gives you a significant amount of, of overall, what I call our emergency capacity. I just wanted to share with you that that was the specific question that Austin got asked from three or four of us to answer, to put this information together.
Thanks, Ty. Ed, did you have something else?
Yeah, so if I'm understanding Lane correctly, then we don't have any debt with the city, with the water or with the sewer, with the electric, you know, small debt with the sewer.
Correct.
So the only bond that we have, the only money that we owe right now is for the Rexon.
That's outside of utilities. We're just focused on the utilities. We have other bonds on the street side, but this is utilities and that, that's, those are tax obligation bonds, as we discussed a couple meetings ago with Austin, or these are revenue bonds. Separate sides, if you will.
Thanks for the clarification.
Other questions or comments?
So, help me here. Since we're rolling these out in tranches and it's the, the, the structure of the repayment is based on the debt service, does, will their payment increase in 26th and then 27th as these tranches roll out?
Correct. Yep. And you can see that, I would refer you to that slide four. It's probably the best place to look for what the total debt service looks like once each of these tranches is issued. So on slide four there, and I can run back to it. You'll see the first, the first column there is your sewer debt, which will be paid off in 2028. Then you have a, a column there for your 2025 issuances. So you'll see that debt. That's that debt that's being planned for this bond transaction. That next section of column there is the 2026 debt that we are anticipating. And you'll see how the debt service rolls on. And then lastly, in 2027, when that final tranche comes in, then you can look at the far right-hand side. You can see really the city's portion of the debt going down as you pay your sewer bonds off. And then the debt service for the industrial plant stepping up over time as that debt gets layered on.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Yes, just a few other things from the working group that I wanted to share with you guys that I think are important on this because this is such a big item. First, Brad, I know you're still thinking about that delta between the numbers a little bit. Without getting into it too deep, in the bond market, there's times where premium bonds and discount bonds have a better value. It's almost like buying your mortgage rate down with a point on a home loan. And so that cushion gives them some flexibility that if it makes sense to issue some premium or discounted bonds, that there's a little cushion because there could be a case where you, you go out and you issue bonds at higher interest rates or lower interest rates to get a better net true interest cost on it. So without getting into the weeds on that, I, he did us a favor by not getting into the weeds on that tonight, but to help you reconcile that delta, that's what that cushion part of is what to help for. But you know, as, as we were all working on this, I think one thing that's, that's really important that we recognize is this is the, really the first time the cities use this style of curb bond. So there was a lot of research done and a lot of information provided about other communities of our size across Nebraska. And most of the communities in our size range are using the curb bond method of financing. And it's a little bit of a shift for us because, you know, we're putting three utilities on the line. Well, those ratepayers all have different uses, different rate schedules and all that. And so I think the thing that's really important for us as council members, department heads, leadership in the city is that this shouldn't change the way we do business. This is balance sheet financing. We're using the strength of our combined utilities to get a better rating, to get a better rate, to get more efficiencies in the issuance. We're gonna save the taxpayers money and we're gonna save sustainable beef money by doing it this way. But this doesn't mean we should pivot on, well, now the water is paying for the electrical and this and that. And so it's really important that we, I think we all understand that this is this is balance sheet financing. It's, it's using the strength of the city to get the best deal. But all the internal accounting and policies and rate setting should be utilized based off the use parameters, not off the financing parameters. And so I just think that's, you're important that we all remember that and that five years, five years from now, when I'm not sitting in this chair, that it's, that's remembered too with this issuance, so.
Thanks, Ty. Other questions or comments?
So to summarize everything, my rates aren't going up as a taxpayer because we're doing this.
That's correct.
We have 20 years to pay this bond off on the new wastewater plant. And sustainable beef is paying for it. We're holding the bond as a utility company because of the new issuances that we just passed. Is that correct?
Simply put, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ed?
Mr. Mayor, so we've got an additional $5 million in there for upgrades at the existing facility. What, what's the plan there?
As you notice with our existing debt, that these payments when those come on board will be less than what our existing debt is. So that's covered by our current user fees without any additions. Any changes to user fees would be based more on inflation and the cost of doing business, not on any debt.
Thank you, Lane. Now, I probably didn't explain my question right. What improvements are we looking at to spend $5 million on?
Part of it is the age of the plant. It's just some, some refurbishing of a 17-year-old plant, replacing some systems. It's an upgrade to the UV system that we have to have. Some changes in state regs that we have to do to the plant. So that's, Brad could probably get into more specifics, but I mean, it's bits and pieces here and there throughout that 20-some million dollar plant.
Brent, do you have anything to add?
I think Lane did a pretty good job, but specifically, there are two items. One is the UV system. It's at end of life and we're doing a combined process with sustainable in this. And the other thing is the solids handling of the current plant has been a problem for probably 15 years. And this will allow them to do solids handling. It'll be a new solids handling. It's part of this as well. So that, those are the two things, is UV and the solids handling on the backend.
Okay, thank you.
Just want to finish real quickly with reminding everybody that this is, like Ty said, a large amount of money for our community. But it's also a significant investment in our community. We have, I'm just gonna ask Gary to nod because he can't say anything, but I, but I'm aware that we have at least one and possibly two significantly sized businesses looking at our, our community. And the only reason that we're in the running is because that plant is there. They wouldn't even be talking to us if that plant wasn't there. And the plant itself is not directly gonna make a lot of money for the city of North Platte. But boy, if we can secure one or two of those things, it's gonna bring more people, more jobs, more businesses, all the things we need to grow our community to our town. So it's a big deal from a lot of perspectives. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, do you mind just clarifying? Are we voting on both the waiver of, of three readings and on the motion together?
Yes, the initial motion was made to waive the three readings out of the gate. So that is the motion. That's correct. So we would be waiving the three readings on this item when we vote right now.
I just want to insert my support for that because we need to give our bond folks timing, the ability to manage the process and closing. But Don also needs to pay the contractors when the bills are due. So I support that, that motion, Ed.
Okay, calling the question on item number four as amended. Item number four is passed as amended. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Austin. We appreciate you being here. Presentation. Have a safe trip home. Item number five, authorize the mayor to negotiate and sign contracts for professional services with HDR for construction phase engineering for the waste, excuse me, the industrial wastewater plant.
Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to negotiate and sign contracts for professional services with HDR for construction phase engineering services.
Second. Motion by Reeker, second by Vols. Brent, you should have taken a closer seat tonight.
Good evening again. Back in December, I put in the packet information. We have the original contract that we had for HDR. What we're looking at is a amendment to extend to the construction phase services. And those parts would include shop drawings, cemental, questions during construction, those, those are the things that we're looking at for the continuing. And what we've been doing is on an hourly basis, so we're paying for it as needed. There isn't a lump sum, but it's on an hourly basis. And where we're at on the construction, the needs are starting to drop. So the thought would be, we could extend it a little bit. Hopefully we'll get more months in there with the extension with what we're looking at. That makes sense.
Brent, is it fair to say that this will likely include part of the startup costs for the, the tanks?
Yeah, there, thanks for mentioning that. One thing that we had talked about was some startup expertise on the plant. There's the biology of the, the treatment process that gets pretty technical with either chemical additions, things like that to keep things balanced as the plant fully comes online. So that would be some of the components that we'd have available to help with the startup process.
Okay, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brent, so is, is this a fixed fee or is this gonna be not, an hourly not to exceed or or how, how do, how do we as a council know what we're paying for? How much we're paying?
Well, it'd be hourly and what we've been doing, it is on their billing rates structure. And that what I do is review it and then we'll put it in for the council for, you know, a monthly review on the fees. So on this, what we had been looking at is roughly around $250,000 increment. And then we'll just go until we run out as far as the, the fee goes. So I guess in that respect, that would be where we'd have for the mayor for the negotiation part.
So, I'm sorry, Ed, I'll give you the floor back. But Brent, so right now, how much longer is the plant likely to be under construction? I think that's relevant to this discussion.
Probably roughly, it depends a little bit on the winter, this winter, but we're in about a year and a half range. We're gonna be pretty close to early 27. That's roughly 18 months is pretty close to early 27.
And I take it they've been doing inspections and stuff now?
With the original contract, this would be an amendment extension to that.
So did our original contract have an end date or?
But we had an, a dollar amount in there that we ended. So we're looking at extending that dollar amount to keep it going.
I don't like to end with that dollar amount still inspect.
Yeah, I agree. I understand.
Yes, sir, Ed.
So since it's a start date of 2027, does our existing plant have enough capacity for sustainable beef to make it to that point?
We, what we have is an interim portion that that will take care of, we have a combination of the permanent, which would be the lagoon cells. There's anaerobic lagoon cells. Those are permanent. Those are online and functioning right now. And then there's an interim portion that will work in the meantime. And actually, right now, we have a part going to the current lagoon. And then it'll also be going to the current plant until the rest of that interim, the intermediate part is functioning. And then it'll go through that intermediate until the final plant's up and going. Right now, they're pouring the big Aration Basin, which is about 150 by 250 feet. They're in the process of pouring the floor of that. So they're moving ahead with the permanent and the interim at the same time.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, calling the question on item number five, please. Item number five is passed. Item number six. Adopt. Sorry, bifocal failure. Adopt the resolution and approve the addendum to the amended redevelopment contract for the North Platte Mall project along with approval of all related actions. This was the item that we tabled two weeks ago.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution as presented in council materials and approve the addendum to amended redevelopment contractors for North Platte Mall project, along with approval of all related actions.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to go into executive session for discussion of the contract.
Okay, hold on just a second. Motion by Reeker, second by Flanders.
Okay. Yes. Before we head there, I just wanted to request I could recuse myself from this item due to potential for conflict of interest.
Okay. Okay. And you'll second the heads, okay. So we have a motion to go into executive session by Reeker and a second by Garrick. Calling the question on executive session, please. We're now in executive session, everyone. Are we back online? Oh, he's sitting over there for the moment. He's, he's still out on this one. Okay, let the record show, the council returned from executive session at 7:21 with unanimous vote of seven to zero to return from the session to discuss contracts. We are, after nearly two hours of meeting, at item number six. That's okay. We've done a lot of good things today, tonight. Okay, just remind everybody, we are considering adopting a resolution to approve an addendum to amend the redevelopment contract for the North Platte project relating to District 177. And I think it's important that at the last council meeting where we discussed this item where it was previously tabled, there had been some discussion about the drainage in that whole area. And the city engineer has done some research on that particular area to understand where all the water flows come from. And I'm just gonna ask him, Angie, could you switch the screen, please? To just to walk very briefly through what the drainage in that area looks like, because it does have some, some bearing on this conversation. There was one of those, yeah. Thank you, though. There we go, okay.
Okay, I'm just gonna kind of cover on a high level. What we did was we took the drainage map from the city map to show you the direction of storm drainage. And this, this cut off a little bit because the shape that we have goes north and south and screens are east and west. But starting at the very bottom, and we have Walmart here. This is where the water goes into the river and then it comes up. The storm pipe comes up, what we call chestnut. We have a short block of chestnut. We have a short block of Chestnut in between the wall and, between Walmart and the mall, District 177. And so all of District 177's drainage from behind in the front come to Francis at Chestnut. We have a portion of Francis Street draining to that same area. And then further east, we have shown over here Poplar and this is Cottonwood. So we have Cotton and Poplar that both drain down to Francis. And then all of this meets up at Chestnut and Francis and then go south across the mall. So this is the whole drainage area for this part of the community. So we have the streets and other businesses all meeting at this one intersection point.
And Brad, is it fair to say that, that some of the pipe sizes are not ideal in this particular area at this time?
Correct. I mean, based on what we see, we see some ponding in different areas, either on the street or on District 177 itself. And it looks like, based on history, that it's been added to over time. It's, it started with a system and then it's been added to. And it's been this way probably at least 20 years. So it's not new in that respect, but it's been historical in that regard.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Brent? Thank you, Brent. I wouldn't go very far given how this meeting is going, so. It is relevant to mention that I received a call from Bike Works, who is the owner of District 177 and the development. And he did tell me yesterday about lunchtime that they are in fact, ready to proceed with this building that would be built in that green space that's in the middle of that picture. And those of you that follow the council might recall that two weeks ago, we did not have that piece of information. We believe that Mr. Works might not start building that building for, until some point in the future. We didn't know what that was. Might be a month, might be six months, might be a year. But now he has informed me as of yesterday about lunchtime that they are planning to proceed with building that building. So my original proposal, which was to change the contract, basically to say, at the point at which you build a building, you need to address this drainage issue on that site, is kind of irrelevant because we've been informed that he's planning to build a building. So because that happened so close to the beginning of the council meeting, I asked our CRA attorney to design an addendum, which I have handed to the council as, as option B here. That is essentially the same language as what's in the, in the council meeting items, except it has paragraph 3.02 drainage plans. And it says, "On or before," at this moment, it says blank, "2025, redeveloper or its successor shall provide the city with detailed construction plans for improvement on such impermeable surface and shall provide calculations of a registered engineer showing the requirements for storm sewer detention or dispersal as a result of such proposed construction." And my recommendation, based on input from various council members, is that we put the date of December 1st, 2025 in this, in this item. And that will essentially require the city and, and Rev Development to create a contract to resolve this drainage issue that would be created with this new building going up. The reason that we're putting it out to December 1st, 2025 is primarily because we need to give the city engineer and his crew some time to determine what the best resolution for drainage in this whole area is, given that there would be another influx of drainage from another apartment building. We don't want to exacerbate the problem in that region. And with the future expansion of Francis Street, it's been recognized that there is occasionally some, when we get a lot of rain, there is some pooling right there at the intersection of Cottonwood and Francis, as well as occasionally at Poplar and Francis. We don't want people tooling through there in a truck at 35 miles an hour and, and, you know, potentially creating a dangerous situation. So this provides us with an opportunity as well as some revenue to help resolve the issue in that whole area. So we're going to give the city attorney a little bit of time to figure out, basically two months, two and a half months or so, to figure out what a better solution is. It's kind of what the proposal is on the table right now, so. Just goes to show you, when you have a town that things are happening in, things change quickly once in a while. So it's exciting to be here. Go ahead, Bill.
So to the mayor's point, we've, we've had a motion to approve the resolution that had the addendum that was in the council materials. So that addendum didn't contain any kind of a date like the mayor was mentioning. So if we, if we want the council to consider that, I, I would ask the council to consider making a motion to amend to include that specific date, whatever, whether it's the mayor's suggestion or some other date. But I think we need to have an amendment offered to be able to change that within the addendum. So if anybody needs any help with the language for what that would look like, I'm happy to help if you want to.
I think I would move to adopt the resolution as presented in council materials with the addition of a December 1st, 2025 date under section 3.02 Drainage Plans.
Second.
And approve the amend, the addendum to amend the redevelopment contract for the North Platt Mall project, along with approval of all related actions.
Second.
Does that satisfy the motion you think is appropriate?
Yeah. Since we already, we already had the motion, do we treat that as a motion?
Yes.
Treat that as a motion to amend the original motion.
And Pete, just for clarification, you said December 1st of 2025, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Vols. Sorry, who was the second? Brian? Second by Flanders. To amend to include a date by which we would, the city would be required to create a contract with, with Rev Development to resolve the drainage issue in which costs and associated plans would be approved or decided within that contract. And that contract needs to be completed by December 1st of 2025. Does everyone have the same understanding? Yes. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further debate on this side? Seeing none, calling the question on item number six as amended. No, this is a vote to amend. I'm sorry. Excuse me. This is a vote to amend. Okay. It passes. Okay. Right. Okay. Not really, but I will. Okay. All right. So the, so item number six is now amended, as I described. It will require one more vote. Mr. Ellis. This is the developer's attorney.
Yeah, Andrew Willis, mayor, council members. I'm, yeah, here on behalf of the developer that, I guess I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I, I can get into some stuff, but that, that amendment certainly would work because again, yes, the, right now, currently, you know, building plans are ready to go, but would have to come back to deal with the drainage issue. So that's why we need a little more time, work with the engineer. But, but yeah, the, I would say the goal is to get that building going fall as soon as possible. But it will take a little time just to figure out the drainage piece, but I'm happy to answer your other questions you have.
Okay, sounds like you're in agreement. So.
Yeah, that would, that would work.
Okay. Calling the que, or excuse me, calling the question on six as amended. Item number six as amended is passed. Thank you, everyone. Running out of space on my tally here. Okay. Number seven. First reading in action on ordinance number 4216 to amend ordinance number 4208 relating to paving District number 842, removing all but two parcels of real estate from the paving district. Lane?
Ordinance number 4216, an ordinance of the city of North Platt, Leaky County, Nebraska, to amend the ordinance number 4208 related to the creation of paving District number 842 on Francis Street from the east side of the intersection of Bryan Avenue and Francis Street since east to Devco Avenue approximately 3,100 feet in the city of North Platt, Leaky County, Nebraska, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 4216 to amend ordinance number 4208 relating to paving District number 842.
Second.
Motion by Rieker, second by Vols. Brent, you want to give us the short version, please?
I'll do the shorter version and need Bill as an assist as needed maybe on this. What we had initially for the paving district was every lot in the entire vicinity is included on the redevelopment agreement. It was going to be assessed with these districts. And through the conversation with the parties in different timelines on selling properties, they had some concerns with the timeline of the, the district assessment costs. And they asked, there's the two main big parcels for the apartments, which is part of the developers, both agreed, both attorneys agreed that what is before you is what they wanted, that their two big apartment parcels would be assigned these costs for Francis Street. Do you want to add to that, Bill?
Yeah, that, that's the general extent of it. So it was an issue that was brought to us by the two larger developers in that area. The, the biggest point of, the biggest point I took away from my discussions with them was that more so the way that the ordinance is currently written with the, with all of the properties within the paving district, the potential for problems on down the road is, is much, much higher. And so I wonder, would it be easier if I pulled up like the GIS map on it?
I think you can just describe it in terms of north of Francis and south of Francis.
Okay, so, so if, if you look at the map, north of Francis in this area, there's going to be a cul-de-sac with multiple residential properties. And so in terms of thinking of the potential problems on down the road, all of those properties would have the paving district assessment attached to them. And so as you think about it, once we get on down the road in this development and somebody puts a house on that, they're likely going to borrow money to buy that house. And so their lender is most likely going to say, we see a paving assessment here, we're probably going to want you to escrow those funds. The problem being that the developer of the apartments is the one contractually obligated to pay for all of the paving assessment through the redevelopment contract. So by including all of those properties, what we've done is we've created this potential where individual owners could potentially start paying towards that paving district. Dawn starts receiving the monies, but she's also receiving the money from the developer for the apartments. And so we're getting multiple payments. And so then Dawn's going to have to issue refunds and it's going to create this administrative nightmare potentially. And that's, that's where my concern arose. And so kind of the bigger question for the council is, do we feel like the two bigger lots that are there that are going to have the majority of the development that is going to happen probably the soonest, is that enough for the council to feel comfortable from a security perspective? Meaning, is that going to be worth enough to be able to pay the costs of the paving district?
When are they planning on having the apartment complexes up and running?
They're, they're doing the dirt work right now on it. They've done the, for the West apartment buildings, they've done, I think, all of the structural foundation work now. And now they're working on the water main going east. It's the same developer paying for that. So as each day goes by, they have more investment put into the ground.
That's a better answer than I can give. I was going to say, I see pipes out there.
The other relevant factor is this is that, this is, you guys might recall, we discussed this when we walked through all these districts, that this is the developer that requested the two-year paving district.
Who caught this mess? Who, who, who caught this?
I'm going to give all the credit to the attorneys for the developers. They, they brought this to us, so.
Good catch.
Yeah. I, I, I think it's, it's a reasonable fix to, to what we're doing. I think that the city is still in a good position by making this change. So I'm, I'm in favor of it. The only other thing I would add, because we do have the bid coming up on this too, just to move things along, because we're amending an ordinance, I, I would ask the council to consider waiving the three readings on it, because we've already really kind of gone through readings and publications and, and all that on the initial ordinance. So it would, it would help if we could waive the three readings on this one so we could keep things moving.
Go ahead. So I'm trying to make any sense of this. I mean, so the materials in our count, in the packages show the same acreage. So is there an acreage differential in the district? Or I, I guess I'm, because what I'm hearing is that there's less, there's less land in the assessment district?
Correct. Yep. And so, and this is what you're looking at in the council materials is the ordinance to amend it to. So you're not seeing, you're not seeing the prior ordinance 4208.
What was the prior acreages?
I have it here, actually. It was, there are quite a few others.
Okay, so those we don't exact. Okay, there's, there's a significant acreage differential.
Yeah, there, there is because part of the acreage that we would be taking out is the acreage to the south of Francis Street. Because the CRA approved an agreement, it's, it's basic, I'll, I'll describe it as an agreement. An agreement between the, it's NPCRE1 is the apartment developer. They've agreed to pay all the costs for that road to take that obligation off of Midwest Land Development, who was the original developer that sold some of the land to NPCRE1. And so that's all tied up in the redevelopment contracts with the CRA then as well. So that's where it starts to get even more complicated.
Well, back to that, that point about making it hard. I mean, the normal function is that when the land's sold, the assessment gets paid off. And the lender doesn't care. And if the developer wants to sell the lot, he clears the assessment. I mean, it's a financing mechanism for the infrastructure. So, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I'm also thinking, well, wait a minute. So that's, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a tremendous difference. And this is about a $2 million piece.
The, the paving district itself, yeah, I think 1.8 is.
1.9.
1.9. So that ties into that following bid.
But it would be less than, 1.9 is both. So it'll be less than that. It's probably more like one and a half.
So the proposal on the table is to put a $1.9 million assessment on the two apartment complex lots of roughly 11 and a half acres and roughly 17.26 acres. Is that right?
Correct.
Well, like 1.5.
Like 1.5, because the, the bid in item number eight also includes.
It's 839 and 842 is, they're both included in that 1.88.
Okay. Sorry, I, this is a more material change than I'd imagined when I was reading this. I'm sorry for getting caught off, a little off guard on this. Just trying to get an idea what kind of assessment per acre we're talking about over there. Guess we're going to put a $50,000 acre per assessment on ground. I mean.
What's a normal one?
Well, that's a hard question. I mean, I don't know. I mean, the, the question's going to be is, is the, I'm certainly not trying to work against the developer in any way, shape or form, but you know, you're putting, you're putting the repayment of a $2 million assessment on, I mean, a smaller acreage of land that wouldn't be worth near that undeveloped. So now all of a sudden, the city's taking a pretty major risk, risk position without, without some kind of. without some kind of security similar to the discussion we had on the prior item. You know, frankly, I think it's a pretty big ask without having some analytical time and some financial review time. But I apologize that I didn't reach out and ask more questions, came on the board.
No, no need to apologize, but that, that was exactly where I came down to, is my concern about the financial security. We do have one of the developer's attorneys here. Mr. Willis is one of the developer's attorneys too, so.
I apologize, I think I could actually help out a little bit, again, Andrew Willis. I, I represent Midwest Land Development, so not the NPCRE side of this, but we have worked this out, and part of the reason why it works, both, I, I think it, we, it, from selling the lots, because NPRC, NPCRE, those two, any of the two lots are, are agreeing to pay for it, but they're paying for it through the, the TIF, part of the redevelopment agreement that was already approved. And so what's a, looks like a large number, but it actually works, because that's what the, that's what they were utilizing some of those TIF dollars for. And it was a concern, as Bill mentioned, just as far as, because NPRC, NPCRE was paying for it to have the assessment against those lots, it was, it was, it was a bit of a challenger, but mainly the, the dollars work, and, and this was really requested by NPCRE because it was funded through the TIF. So I think that may help with the large number, what it looks like.
And thank you, Andrew, that's, I had kind of forgotten about that piece of it, but part of the reason why it came about too, it wasn't just from the administrative concerns that they rose, but they, they're planning to use these expenses as TIF eligible costs too. And so they want to be able to use the expenses, so, so it, it benefits NPCRE one and, or two or whatever, whatever the LLC is. But it, it benefits them to be able to use these as eligible expenses for their TIF. And so they have an incentive to pay these costs, which then factors into that argument about security for the city too.
And, and I would just would add, I, the, these are like, they were about a three million dollar value, what those lots were purchased for prior to any improvements at all, so I guess, at least, I'm biased, but that seemed like a good security, because you've got three million dollars of land prior to any buildings going up on about a one point five million dollar assessment.
So that twenty nine acres has an estimated value of roughly three million.
That's, that's what they paid for, yeah, and again, I'm not, I don't represent them actually, but that, that's what they paid for it.
And I can represent, that's what the other developer's attorney represented to me too.
So this, thi- this is annotated in the redevelopment contract, which we do not have in front of us.
Well, the redevelopment agreement was previously approved by this council and the NPCRE, when they assi- when that portion of that redevelopment agreement was assigned to NPCRE, again, approved by the council, they were responsible for that paving, that stretch of Francis. The part I'm not aware of is when that went to the paving district, but again, those were, that was part of, in that redevelopment contract, those were part of the TIF costs were going to that. So then, when it went to the paving district, the idea was still to use the TIF to pay for that. So, so all of, so the, the, I guess the redevelopment, everything in the redevelopment contract's already been approved. It really isn't relevant, this is just ultimately the, the payment mechanism was, it, it would remain the same as what was in the contract. Or that's the goal anyway, paying for the street. And, and just to clarify, the NPCRE piece of this never came to the council, that was negotiated at the CRA level. Oh, okay, apologize, yes, thank you, apologize. I, I would remember the acronym, NPCRE, and how difficult that is to remember. So, yeah, that, that part was assigned and that, just, okay, so, yeah, I apologize, it just went to CRA.
So the, the other option to consider in this is just to do nothing and tell the developer, you need to pay for it all within the two-year timeframe. I mean, we could do that, it would create a lot of.
It could create some of.
Work, but they can't, I mean, that is an option as well.
I guess the last thing I would add, and I apologize, is just that, you know, from Midwest perspective, they, it does make it pretty difficult, and they would kind of, I guess, to the extent I can, would oppose approving a paving district if this, this, I mean, they, the Midwest would not be supportive of it, because it really only works financially in this deal if it was all on the NPCRE side.
The paving district's already approved.
I mean, the, the, yeah, the, to the extent I can, I would oppose accepting a bid until this was all figured out, again, I know it's just, because, because it really is, they, they are, the intent, at least from our perspective, was that that would be paid by NPCRE through the, the redevelopment agreement. For what it's worth, which I realize is not.
So kind of what the paving district is doing is it's somewhat realigning some of those costs so that it might fall on some of the other property owners when it really shouldn't.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. You're, you're talking above my head here. That doesn't mean very much, but. So what's the downside to the city if we approve this?
So the, the downside would be if the development stops, if it doesn't continue on, they don't, the NPCRE developer does not make the paving district assessments. Then, then the, the city, if the city does approve this change, if, if the only lots that are assessed are to that, to those two lots owned by NPCRE one, then the city doesn't have as much security in, in recovering some of those expenses. So there could be, in my opinion, there could be a, a little bit greater potential for the city to not recover all those expenses. The question becomes, how great of a potential is that? To Councilman Lucas's point, there's quite a bit less acreage involved, and so, you know, is, is the city as secure as if we had all of that property included? Not necessarily.
Would those fees be assessed to the property then? So whoever bought the property is going to pay the fees.
Realistically, yes.
So that seemed like we have any more risk at all.
Depends on what they buy it for, and I mean, there's a lot of factors that, that factor into that equation, so we don't know for sure what all of that means, or, you know.
Well, our, our, our concrete costs or street costs are going to be fixed.
Right.
And if those are charged against the property, then when somebody buys a property, he's going to pay the fixed cost for the street, right?
Yeah, well, I mean, it, it may, in, in the worst happens, it may take several years, but it would be recovery at some point, that's correct. Mr. Mayor, I want to, may I add to that, please? I mean, I think we need to step, this wasn't the deal that came to us when we talked through the paving district. And again, I want this to happen, and I want to be supportive of it, but we want to remember the bath the city took over on Victoria, because they released a bunch of collateral or let it go when a project was in the early stages many years ago. And we need to be careful here, I mean, paving is one aspect of infrastructure. For that property to be useful, it's got to have all the other infrastructure that's not part of the district. And so, you know, if all the infrastructure was in, and the property's appraised at north of one point five million, and there's a market for that, then all of a sudden, to me, that's not an exorbitant risk, or if the, or if the developer's going to put up alternative collateral or whatever the case, or, or, you know, I mean, there's a million ways that that could be done, but I think it's a pretty aggressive request, honestly, I mean, is, is thirty acres that is undeveloped and raw worth a million five to us if, if things don't work the way they've planned and they can't pay off that assessment in, in two years? I, I just don't think that was the deal that was on the table for us. And I mean, I hear what they're saying about the logistics of all those lots, but I mean, we discussed, we discussed that, and, I mean, it's common for developers to sell lots with assessments and then take the proceeds of that lot sale and remove the assessments from a property, so I, I don't want to be negative against this, because I don't know if I've had enough time to absorb the, the information, but I think this is a significant, I think this, this is a significantly different transaction than what we were examining when we approved the paving district.
I guess the question, we don't approve this.
Well, we'll have to reject the bids, because they'll have gone by past thirty days.
The other paving district, I mean, the paving district is already in place, so this just doesn't change it.
That's true, right.
So if, if you don't do anything on this proposed ordinance, then the other paving district just remains as it has been approved already.
Yes, I would move that we table this, we have time to think through this and take a really clean look at the request.
Second.
Okay, motion to table by, table by Lucas. Second by.
Derek.
Derek. Calling the question on tabling. Table to the next meeting. What should we do about item eight?
Think we can still continue on with it, so.
Okay.
We can, I mean, we can still bring up the, we can take item number seven off the table at the next meeting. Still consider amending the area, but in the meantime, we can go forward with it.
Because overall assessments won't happen until the project's finished, and so there's still time for that piece of it.
Item rate, approve the bid and authorize mayor to sign contract with Paulson, Inc. of Cozad, Nebraska for paving district number eight three nine Francis Street from Tabor to Bryan Avenue and Bryan Avenue from Francis Avenue North approximately one hundred and sixty five feet to existing concrete. And paving district eight four two Francis Street from the east side of the intersection of Bryan Avenue and Francis Street since east to Devco Avenue approximately thirty one hundred feet in the amount of one million eight hundred eighty eight thousand nine hundred fifty six dollars and fifty cents.
I move to approve the bid and authorize mayor to sign contract with Paulson, Inc. of Cozad, Nebraska for paving district number eight three nine Francis Street from Tabor to Bryan Avenue and Bryan Avenue from Francis Avenue North approximately one hundred and sixty five feet to existing concrete. And paving district number eight four two Francis Street from the east side of the intersection of Bryan Avenue and Francis Street since, since east to Devco Avenue approximately thirty one hundred feet in the amount of one point eight eight nine five six and fifty cents.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Rieker, any further discussion on item? Seeing none, calling the question, I have number eight. Item rate is passed. Item number nine, first reading in action on ordinance number four two one five to create paving district number eight four three on Bryan Avenue from the intersection of Francis Street, hence heading south on Bryan Avenue approximately two hundred and sixty seven feet. Lane, the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number forty two fifteen, an ordinance for the creation of paving district number eight forty three on Bryan Avenue from the intersection of Francis Street, hence heading south on Bryan Avenue approximately two hundred and sixty seven feet in the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and ordering the construction of street improvement therein.
Move to adopt ordinance number four two one five to create paving district, or paving extension district number eight four three as presented in the council materials on first reading.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Rieker. Let's see, Brent, you want to tell us what's going on here, please?
Good evening, everyone, again, this is directly connected to the other two paving districts. Eight thirty nine goes from Tabor to Bryan, and then up to connect into that little piece, that gap. This would go from the intersection of Francis and Bryan and going south. It would be in between, the, it would be just east, I should say, of the connection project. So this would be on the side of the connection project. And we had a signed petition in favor of this from the connection and from the Brewers. The connections, the west side, the Brewers, the east side, so those, that represents a hundred percent of the property there. And if you don't mind, if I backtrack real quick on what we're looking at this, we might do a a change order to our contract with Paulson's. The price that we got for the eight thirty nine, eight forty two, we used Ninth Street dollars their bid, and we were two point five million. And on this, on the last two that we approved, it was one point, roughly one point nine million, so we were about six hundred thousand less than the items we had from Ninth Street. So that was our thought, is that we could use the contractor that we had already bid to finish this particular piece if the council approves to go forward with it.
We would consider that change in the future, though, right?
Correct.
Okay.
If, if it's approved and everybody agrees on it, but that was an option that we looked at.
Ed, you have a question?
Yes. So with Brent's comments there, does that impact us, whether we need to go to one reading or a three reading?
I don't think on this particular, from the engineering standpoint, I don't think doing one reading would hurt us one way or the other, if you want to do one reading prove it at the next, I think we'll be okay with Paulson's in the contract, whichever way we go.
But I would agree with that, or Brent then, could, with the first reading, Brent could go to the contractor and see if they would agree to that change order, and then that could be another item to couple along with the second reading, which then you could decide if you wanted to.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, calling the question on item number nine, please. Item number nine is passed, item number ten, approve a resolution for a micro TIF project for Danlex Property Group LLC for rehabilitation of existing apartments of property located at one four zero four and one four two zero Rodeo Road.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a resolution for a micro TIF project for Danlex Property Group LLC for rehabilitation of existing apartments.
Second.
Motion by Lucas, second by McNue. Okay, Judy, I know you've talked about this before, but why don't you remind us, please?
So this is a micro TIF project up on Rodeo Road, and at the last council meeting, we approved a Blight and Substandard study that would allow.